I'd like to call to order the regular session of the Newport Beach City Council, October 11, 2016. Madam Clerk.
The record will reflect that Mayor Protem Muldoon has an excused absence.
Okay.
Public comments. The city provides yellow signing cards to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional signing card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on items listed on agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Please come forward. Anybody wishing to make comments?
Thank you, Mayor Dixon and members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher, and I was surprised to see this announced as the second meeting in a row where there didn't seem to be anything that needed to be discussed in the afternoon, and also where there's very little on the evening agenda as well. If you're short on something to study, I previously suggested the gas company's advanced meter streetlight antenna deployment, which I continue to think would be a good subject to explore. And I also think formulating a policy on public disclosure of contributions and private communications prior to making decisions would also be good. As far as I may be expanding on in connection with tonight's consent calendar, I think the future of Newport Coast would be a good subject because there, it appears, the Irvine Company may have plans for massive new development, but the council candidates even running from that district seem blissfully unaware that there could be any issues brewing there other than the need to eventually repave Newport Coast Drive. The absence of anything to study when there obviously are things to study makes the cynical belief that the business of government in Newport Beach may be happening through private interactions between interested parties, council, and staff outside of public view, which I think is a problem. And speaking of that problem, I was astounded at a recent council candidate forum to hear the candidates asked who, if elected, would be the go-to persons on the city staff that they would contact if they needed to get things done for their constituents. The questioner was apparently unaware of City Charter Section 406, which is entitled "Interference With the Administrative Service," and if you've not read that recently, I recommend you do. While the city council members are free, just like any other citizen, to ask questions of the city staff, they have exactly one go-to person that they can direct to get things done, and that one person is the city manager. Under our council-manager form of government, the council members are definitely not mini city managers directing the city employees. And other than answering a question, directing a city employee violates the city charter. And I might add that while the charter does not explicitly require them to do that, prudence suggests that even direction to the city manager should be occurring at a public meeting like this so the city manager has the benefit of knowing whether he's being directed by one council member or by the council as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comments, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Dixon. The city council will adjourn to closed session, discuss one item of existing litigation entitled Voss versus City of Newport Beach, and one matter of anticipated litigation where the city council will consider whether to initiate litigation. Thank you.
Thank you. We are in recess until 7:00 PM. Good evening. We'll reconvene at the regular meeting of the city council, Newport Beach City Council, October 11, 2016. Madam Clerk.
The record will reflect that Mayor Protem Muldoon has an excused absence.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Dixon. There is no closed-session report this evening.
All right. If you would please rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Duffield, followed by the invocation by Reverend Fernando Tamarra of the Orange County First Assembly of God.
Please place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you remain standing? God, today, we're so grateful to be here. Thank you for the gift of life, the gift of relationships and community. It is because of life that we exist and we interact today. It is because of the relationships that we learn how to build one another, a city as Newport Beach. It is in the midst of relationships that we learn how to deal with our neighbors, and we can create peace and flourish in our community. And finally, Lord God, we pray for wisdom for all of our council members and every single one person in this place, that you help us to bring all of the diverse community into one so that we can create new projects for our city. It is our prayer. Amen.
Thank you. We have two presentations this evening. The first, from the Friends of Oasis, will be giving us an update. Mr. Carroll, would you like to come forward with your compatriots, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Dixon. Council members, thanks for inviting us here tonight. We had Friends of Oasis, and by the way, I'm John Carroll. For those who don't know me, I am the current president of Friends of Oasis. They handed me the gavel this last July. We thought it would be a good idea, as Friends of Oasis, if we came down and really touched base with you guys on a personal basis more frequently. You know, we want to tell you a little about, you know, how we work so well with your administrative staff at Oasis Senior Center, and some of the things we do together. Before I get to rambling too much, I would like to say your administrative staff there is terrific. You know, when you look at them as a group of people, I spent several years in the property and casualty insurance business, and I got involved with a lot of companies and got to know them pretty well, and every one of them had at least one or two screw-ups in their employee ranks. Your administrative staff there doesn't have any that I can identify. They're absolutely terrific, and I mean that. We also want to make sure that you people don't think we're like the kids who have come home after a couple of years out on their own and have moved into the spare bedroom and don't really, you know, contribute anything to the household. We're not that. We're really your partners in the operation of this senior center, you know, and I mean that sincerely also. You know, just talking about a couple of things that we, you know, that we do together. As far as the van pools, Celeste approached us last year, and, you know, as our membership has increased, the need for the transport vans has increased, and in order to maintain consistency of service, Celeste needed to hire another part-time driver. It wasn't in her budget, so she approached us. We stepped up to the plate and said, "We'll pay this guy's salary." Unfortunately, it took a long time to fill the position for a lot of reasons, but we now have a live one, I understand, so we're stepping up and we're going to pay that salary. It's something we do together with the city to, you know, continue the great service we have at Oasis Center. In addition with the van pool, the GPS system, we got involved in helping with that. And this is a great system, and I don't know if all of you are aware of it, but the in-house coordinator can see where the vans are, and if somebody calls and says, "I need to be picked up," they can contact that driver, divert him to that place, and it really cuts down on a lot of unnecessary trip time. And any time I see efficiency being approved, I think of cost-effectiveness, so that should be meaningful, and we pay the monthly fee for this service. A while back, a couple of years ago, in fact, the chairs in the Evelyn Heart Center that we use day in and day out, I mean, they're, they get overused. They started to deteriorate very badly, so we had bought those chairs, and we negotiated with a manufacturer, and it took us several months, but they sent us 300 and some odd seat covers to replace the bottom seat covers on these chairs. So once we got them, a few seniors, myself involved, started experimenting with recovering these, and we quickly realized we had lost a lot of our manual dexterity and probably a lot of drive to undertake a project like this. So we called the volunteer coordinator at Corona Del Mar High School, and we rounded up 20 kids that were just absolutely wonderful. They came down, the phones all went on the sideboard. They went to work one Saturday morning. They did all the chairs by early afternoon. So the bottom line on that is we extended the life of the use of those chairs by another year and a half. And now, unfortunately, the chairs have been done in, and we are purchasing some new ones, well, the city is, and thank you for that. But it's something, here again, it's something where we had kids involved with us doing something to help the community, and it worked. Pancake breakfast, something we do the first Saturday of every month, and here's another place where we get student volunteers serving not only our members but also members of the community. We have a lot of parents that bring up their young kids for pancakes. Ed Selig has been there a couple of times with his granddaughter, and they like the Mickey Mouse pancakes we make. And here again, this is something where you have, you know, young and old getting involved with the community and doing something on a Saturday, which I think is great. I hope you do, too. Subsidies. We subsidize a tremendous amount of the events that go on at Oasis Center and classes. You know, for example, we subsidize the Oktoberfest, the holiday lunch, the Thanksgiving luncheon, and that sort of thing, and we do it regularly every month. We get together with your administrative staff around budget time every year, and we plan this out together. Here again, we're working together. We think we're a team. People have asked me, and I think it was Laura Detwiler that said, "Well, jeez, you ought to talk a little about how you raise the money that, you know, you put out for these things." So the first thing that comes to mind is, yes, we take in membership dues. And let me digress for a minute on the dues. Our membership, when you opened that building six years ago, was somewhere around 1,800 people. We now have a little north of 5,000 members, so it has grown tremendously. And, you know, we obviously had to beef up our administrative staff at Friends to handle this, so money raising is a very important thing to us. And the membership dues are only one part of it. We do hold an annual rummage sale, which we just finished this last weekend. Just talking to Scott Paulson here, one of my colleagues, we did meet our goals on that. We do a casino night in the spring, which is a big fundraiser for us, and that's always successful. We have our gift shop where we collect money, our travel department, the pancake breakfast, all of these things, you know, supply us with money. In the good old days, we had some investment income, but unfortunately, in the last five years, that really dried up a little, so we have now formed an investment committee, and we're actually implementing, because we've done some studies on this, and our investments are starting again slowly to get some traction, and we need that. In the meantime, we have separate fundraisers. We had a very successful one last year. I call it begging. And we've started another one because we really, in order to maintain things on an even keel, we need that money, and it's going along pretty well, this fund drive. Anyway, I just wanted to fill you in on some of the things we've done, you know, together. You know, and we want to tell you we're going to continue to do those things. We'd like to see all of you come down and visit Oasis more, drop in and say hi, I'll buy you a cup of coffee and tell you what's going on. I think it's important that we get together because we are a team. We think Oasis is probably one of the premier senior centers in the United States, and we want to keep it that way. And we just love working with your staff. That's pretty much what I have to say, and thank you.
Well, Mr. Carroll, thank you for this report, and I commend you all for coming in. Why don't all of you stand up who are with Friends of Oasis so we could sufficiently thank you? Thank you for your hard work. I know I've heard over many months that they, as you indicated, your 5,000 members, that thousands of volunteer hours that are contributed to the running and operation of Oasis, which clearly is a savings to the city of Newport Beach because that's just fewer paid services that the city would fund out of the general fund. And Celeste, I just want to recognize you for you are the, for your stewardship of Oasis, and Laura Detwiler was mentioned, too, for our recreation and senior services. But Oasis, I agree with you, Mr. Carroll, that in my perhaps limited observations, but I have been truly impressed with the fine management and volunteer spirit that organizes around Oasis and our community. It's not just the senior community. I understand that you can be 50 or younger and be a member of Oasis. So to all of you watching or listening tonight, if you haven't been over to Oasis, I encourage you to do so. So on behalf of the city council, thank you for all you do, and we'll continue to do to add tremendous value to our, all members of our community, and it's just a lot of fun over there. So thank you for making our city such fun. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Does anybody else want to say, make any other comment? Thank you very much, all of you. Appreciate it. All right. Now we have two presentations to a recognition of our, what do I want? Two, Dan Wendell of St. Andrews Presbyterian Church, and John Murray, one of our code enforcement officers. So is somebody going to speak on this? Maybe our Director of Community Development is going to speak.
Thank you, Mayor Dixon. Members of the council, I'm Kim Brant, your Community Development Director, and this is a special evening. We want to recognize, I think, a very unique and very satisfying code enforcement effort. And as you know, the Community Development Department includes the Code Enforcement Division, and the code enforcement staff encounter a lot of different types of interesting items to take care of, and some of them do include property maintenance. And when we're looking at property maintenance of single-family homes, sometimes there's some very unique circumstances that require, I would think, out-of-the-box thinking and addressing in a way that it meets the neighborhood's concerns about the appearance of a property but also takes into consideration property owners' situations. And this was a case that happened on, most recently, on the, on Balboa Peninsula, where, whoops, I'm looking to the wrong person. I'm sorry, Dan. Where a code enforcement officer, John Murray, was made aware of a property condition on Balboa Boulevard, and he, having some experience with that property, he decided to look at it in a very creative way, where he reached out to various volunteer organizations, asking for assistance in helping to clean up this property. And so Dan Wendell, who's with St. Andrews Presbyterian, was, I think, not even in the least bit hesitant to answer the call, and so John and Dan worked together to organize a cleanup event on September 17. So Dan was able to bring 20 volunteers together, and they also not only brought the manpower, but they also brought the, they provided the funding and the, for the materials, and I think you also brought the materials. And then John did the coordination with the property owner. So as these few slides indicate above, there were 20 volunteers working, and I think they were there for five hours, so that was 100 hours of volunteer efforts. And the result, I think, was very pleasing, as indicated, there's the before picture, and it scrolls through a little bit, and then you can see the after picture as viewed from the public right away. I think six truckloads of trash were collected from the property altogether, and I think, John, did you actually drive each truck? He wanted to drive the truck over to the, over to the yard to unload it. So I think it was a very satisfying experience for everyone involved, and we, of course, are very appreciative of the efforts of St. Andrews, and we just, we're glad to have this opportunity to recognize their efforts as well as the creativity of John, so.
Well, I agree, and thank you for answering the call, literally in our community, and for going beyond the call of duty to find a creative solution, out-of-the-box thinking to helping people in need, and also to comply with our rules and regulations. So thank you. Let me come down and present a certificate to each of you. Madam Clerk.
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow signing card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional signing card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for city council announcements.
All right. Let's start over with Mr. Petros.
I have no announcements tonight, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Curry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had the honor of representing the city this year at the California League of Cities Conference, had the opportunity to sit down with the CEO of Bristol Farms. Of course, Newport Beach is one of the primary Bristol Farms locations, and talk about the challenges in the grocery industry. We talked about pensions, budgets, labor relations. We had a special panel on council, manager, and staff relations and appropriate actions. At the same time, the Long Beach Civic Innovation Summit was going on. I had a chance to meet with my friend, Mayor Bob Garcia, from Long Beach, talk about the exciting things he's doing in that city to improve public services, and generally learned quite a bit and had a chance to see many of our colleagues from around California. Also participated with Mr. Selich and with Mr. Muldoon and others on the Food &amp; Wine Festival, and with the Crystal Cove Annual Gala this year as well. And of course, with me at the League of Cities was Mayor Protem Muldoon.
Very good. Mr. Selich.
Nothing this evening.
Mr. Piattar.
None.
Mr. Duffield.
I have none.
Okay. I have a few announcements, as always. Last, or a couple Thursdays ago, I know many, most of us, I believe, were there at the Fire and Lifeguard Appreciation Dinner, and it was, it's always a wonderful time to recognize those who are keeping us safe on land and sea. And a particular note was the recognition of Maria Course Marrows, if I say her name, Course Marrows, who was the victim in the recent last Memorial Day Corona Del Mar shark attack, and it was amazing experience to see her standing there in all appearances of excellent, good health and physical condition. So it was really a moving evening, and it was a night of tribute and honor to the men and women who protect us on land and sea. So thank you, Chief Poster, I don't know if he's here, and Lifeguard Chief Rob Williams, it was a wonderful evening. Some exciting community events. Mark your calendars. This weekend, Art in the Park, the Newport Beach Arts Foundation will host the annual Art in the Park event this Saturday, October 15, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, right out here in the civic green. Admission and parking are free, and there will be a total of 110 artists and artisans selling artwork, and the event proceeds will help fund future art programs in the city. Next, Half-Century Aerial Photography Retrospective, an interesting exhibit currently on display in the Central Library traces the history of Fashion Island in Newport Center in a beautiful collection of aerial photography. And this display shows the progression of development from 1966, when Fashion Island was a dirtfield used for the Boy Scout jamboree, up to the current day. So next Monday, October 17, at 7:00 PM, in fact, several of the individuals who played an important role in the area's development will be featured in a free lecture, again at the Central Library. Please visit nbpl.org for details. And then, our friends at Oasis just left, but one of the many programs that are valuable to all of us in the community is they will host their annual Senior Resources Expo, Saturday, October 22, from 9:00 AM to 12:00. So if you or one of your family members would like to know more from the 60 vendors who provide information on a variety of senior services, such as health and wellness, home care and caregiver agencies, medical groups, and more, and admission is free. And then following is a Taste of Oasis from 12:00 to 1:00, so that's always a nice little social hour. And then finally, we've been asked to give plenty of notice about free document shredding, and I'm glad to know people are doing this and taking their security seriously in document shredding their documents. So Save the Date is November 4, from 8:00 AM to noon in the Mariners Elementary School parking lot, so for free. Bring your unwanted documents, and they will be shredded. It's a joint program between the city and CRNR. Free document shredding. Okay. Madam Clerk.
Public comments on consent calendar. This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion, items 1 through 10. Public comments are invited on consent calendar for members of the audience. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
All right. We'll start, Mr. Petros, any? Mr. Curry?
I have 12.
Mr. Selich?
I have 9.
Mr. Piattar?
I was working with staff, and I believe we're going to continue item 12.
Item which?
That's correct. It's not on consent, but that would be item 12.
I'm sorry, that's on, never mind. Nothing.
What?
Item 12, when we get to that.
Oh, but that's not on consent.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Mr. Duffield?
I have a small comment on item number six. Short.
Go right ahead. Go ahead.
Okay. So, item six is a dredging contract, and the job of dredging the Grand Canal is a good one, and it should go ahead. And I'm not suggesting taking any action on this item tonight. I only want to shed some light on the competitive bidding process. First and foremost, the dredging challenge in our harbor is staging the equipment to do the job. We don't have any equipment for dredging in our harbor. A marine dredging contractor has to tow his equipment from other harbors miles away and charge the dredging applicant a fee. This staging process is very expensive, and nobody wants to absorb such a fee for one job. So the contractor waits for several applicants to be issued permits so they can share the costs of staging and provide cost of staging and provide more incentive for the contractor to do the work. As a result, every dredging job in our harbor that requires the sediment to be dumped in the ocean is done by one outfit, Associated Pacific Constructors. They charge whatever they need to do the work. I'm not saying we should rebid this job. I'm not saying Associated Pacific Constructors are a bad outfit. They specialize in dredging. It's important to move ahead and get the Grand Canal done, but we should be aware of the process and move towards a program that would offer more bang for the buck. I look forward to exploring with staff new opportunities and methods for dredging, and will work hard to that end in the coming months and years. And that's it.
Okay, you're not pulling that item, that was your comments. Okay, and then, I just wanted to make a comment on two items. Number three are related to the Vin Scully Day. Just going forward in the future, if staff could come back and maybe we need a council policy on these special days, maybe not, maybe, I just wanted to discuss that. So, sometime, no rush. And then, on item number 10, I just wanted to clarify on the Balboa Village Advisory Committee, two candidates for appointment, Mike Wheeler to represent, and Explore Ocean is no longer called Explore Ocean, it's now called Ocean Quest, as a result of a merger or acquisition or merger of Discovery Cube and Explore Ocean. So just, maybe council can come back with a revised resolution at some point. That's just a technical detail. So otherwise...
I've heard no other comments, I'll move approval of consent calendar.
Okay, wait a second. All right, and we'll go to public comments.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher, and I would like to expand on item number eight, which is the report on the actions taken at last Thursday's Planning Commission meeting, specifically the commissioners' items number six and seven, which affect the potential for the future development in the Newport Coast annexation area. That meeting blew away the notion of the council candidates running from District 7 that there is nothing likely to happen in that district other than the repaving of the Newport Coast Drive. Because it's much messier than I can explain in three minutes and also involves Measure Y from 2014, I will focus just on the Pelican Hills subarea, which our general plan calls Anomaly 60. But to understand this, you have to understand planning decisions in this area are made by the county pursuant in most of the area to regulations approved by the Coastal Commission. The Coastal Commission many years ago placed a hard limit on hotel development in Anomaly 60 of 2,660,000 square feet. So when the Irvine Company assured us for several years that their 15-year development plan had essentially been completed at a lesser figure, it seemed halfway plausible that they had unused potential, that they could ask voters to move here in Newport Center as they did with Measure Y. The first embarrassment is that when the county planners recently added up for this report how much had been built over the years, if you took away the amount stated in Measure Y, you would have substantially less left in Newport Coast than is already there. So there never was 1,100,000 square feet to move. The second embarrassment is although they didn't have the exact numbers, city planners were aware of this problem before the election and decided that if the voters approved moving a million square feet, after the election, they could explain there had been an innocent goof up, and they could make the Irvine Company whole by giving them what in my mind is a gift of extra square footage to justify what they have on the ground. Well, even though nothing was moved, nothing was moved, TIC magically got that gift of 375,000 more square feet last Thursday without the public having a right to appeal, call for review, or a green light vote. So now, by the county's estimate, with us backing them, TIC indeed has roughly a million square feet of unused building potential to work with. But to me, the more troubling aspect of this was a revelation last Thursday that two of you council members have been privately negotiating a 15-year extension of the development agreement, which will essentially say that the city will not interfere with what TIC and the county may decide to do with those million square feet. I don't recall the council discussing whether that would be good for the city or anyone being appointed to negotiate an agreement on behalf of the council. That doesn't sound like good governance to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on the consent calendar? All right, let's call for the vote. Oops. I didn't mean to push that.
The motion carried unanimously, 6-0.
All right. Madam Clerk.
Public comments on non-agenda items. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items, generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Members of the public who wish to speak, please come forward.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher, and on Saturday I received my sample ballot, and I was interested in it about ballot measure MM, the so-called require five of seven votes of the City Council to propose taxes measure. Several of you have been telling me to vote yes, arguments are in the ballot booklet here. Mr. McCaffrey, who has done so much for our city, is recommending I may vote no on this. And I realize that you cannot tell me how to vote, but since you unanimously placed it on the ballot, I do have a question about it, which you could perhaps answer for me. It's called the five of seven vote requirement, and it seems very big in the issue, and the charter will be modified to say tax measures have to be approved by at least five of seven votes of the City Council. Now, I understand the five part of this. A resolution passed by the City Council under our charter requires four yes votes, and this is asking for one more vote than the usual requirement. What I don't understand is the seven part, and again, it's emphasized throughout this, it has to be five of seven votes. I appreciate that there's seven people on the City Council, but I'm trying to understand what you mean by this. If one of the City Council members, one of the seven decides to abstain from the vote, or one of them doesn't happen to be present on the day of the vote, or chooses not to be present, so that the vote comes out five of six, or maybe even six of six, does that mean the measure can't be placed on the ballot? Is that what you're trying to mean by this? Well, what do you mean by the seven in the five of seven? That is my question, and I hope somebody could clarify that for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, do you want to comment on that, please?
Yeah, Jim, five votes carries the day, so if someone's absent, it doesn't matter.
All right, any other comments from the public, please come forward. On non-agenda items, any other comments? All right, seeing none, we will move into oral reports from the City Council, so I'll start on this side, Mr. Piattar. Mr. Duffield. Mr. Selig?
I have none.
Mr. Curry?
I have none.
Mr. Petros?
Very briefly, this Thursday, we will be convening the Finance Committee at 4:00 in the Newport Coast Conference Room here in City Hall Bay 2E. This is a very important meeting. I encourage virtually every Newport Beach citizen to attend, as this will be our discussion, our primer on our unfunded liability, how it's calculated, what that number means, what our obligation and liabilities are. It is the first attempt to describe the elephant in the room. So if you have any thoughts, any questions, any concerns about unfunded liabilities, this is the place to start. If you have spoken at the water cooler about this matter, I would suggest that you attend this meeting, because it is something that is of import to all of us up here, and it should be of import to you as citizens of Newport Beach. So this Thursday, 4:00 p.m., the Newport Coast Conference Room in Bay 2E. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
That was an excellent announcement, I couldn't agree more. So thank you for your leadership in that. All right, any, I don't see any other, oh, I would be the only one, so no other announcements. So we'll move right into current business. So it's item number 11, the purchase and sale agreement with Lab Holding LLC for the Balboa Theater property located at 707 East Balboa Boulevard. And Ms. Brandt or Mr. Derges, please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, council members. The item before you this evening is a purchase and sale agreement to sell the Balboa Theater for $1 million to the Lab Holdings. I'm going to talk a few minutes, just give a background, a little history on the project and the property, then I'm going to hand it over to Shaheen Siddiqui, who's president of the Lab Holdings, so he can also make a presentation. The property was acquired by the city in 1998 for $490,000 using federal community development block grant funds. These are federal funds which are restricted, so if we were to, if the council were to decide to agree to the purchase and sale agreement and sell the property, the million dollars that, or any revenue that was received is restricted funds and would have to go back to the block grant fund account that we do have. Once we purchased the property in 98, after a few years, the City Council had decided to sell the property. Back in June 2015, staff put the property out to market to see what proposals we would get. We received five proposals from different parties, with a offer price ranging from 1.7 million to tear down the building and develop a mixed-use project, down to $1 million to preserve the theater use. At that time, staff believed that there was an opportunity to continue with the idea of preserving the theater, so we went back out to the five proposers and asked them if they would agree to a deed restriction that would be recorded on title that would restrict the use of the property to some type of theater use or some type of event center. That's an important element to this whole deal and hold project. Out of the five, there were only two that actually accepted that deed restriction. Staff made, staff reviewed the two proposers and reviewed their background and history. Their experience was going to be very important to this project, because whoever was going to tackle the existing building, that existing building is very old, it's close to a century old, and it needed a lot of investment dollars. So whoever was going to be awarded the opportunity to do that needed to have that experience of tackling these older buildings, these older kind of historic iconic structures. Somebody who had the background of operating this type of use was very important to us. So you had history, experience, and the operating capacity to do it. We, staff recommended, staff is recommending to sell the property to the Lab Holding, Inc., but their offer was for a million dollars. So we went and appraised the property, we got two different appraisal reports. The first appraisal report was based on just the highest and best use. What if you tore down the building and sold that dirt for the highest use, and what was the value of that? That value came in at 1.625 million dollars, and that was for a mixed-use project, which would include a commercial component with three housing units on top. So what was the value of the building as-is, the way it sat today, which is a old, 100-year-old building that needed a lot of investment dollars, that would be converted into a theater use and a little bit of retail use with a deed restriction? So that value came in at $890,000, so below the offer that the holding, the Lab Holding Company has offered to us. So hence, we have, our staff is recommending that since the offer from the lab is over the as-is value, so the value at $1 million, we're recommending that council approve the purchase and sale agreement. At this time, I want to turn it over to the president of the Lab Holding, Shaheen, and he has a presentation on what their vision is for their project and also a little bit of background on them, if that's okay.
Okay, sure, please, please come forward.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. Thank you very much for your invitations tonight. I think I would first and foremost want to really thank you for your vision of preserving your historical buildings. I always say we have this horrible habit in this country that we tear down our past, and I think although many of these buildings are very simple representations of our history and culture within this country, it's not Rome, they really do have tremendous value and the opportunity to preserve them and have the next generations of our community enjoying is really a big deal. We certainly have enjoyed doing this type of work here the last 25 years that we've had our company, and I know that each time we've done this, it's completely paid off for us, so thank you very much for your vision, for doing that. Okay, so I'm going to go right into my slides here. So, in very simple form, we are purely interested in preservation. So I think the idea is we're not really interested in modifying this. I think that when we get into these, the preservations of these historical buildings, we find that the value is there when you bring it back and keep the authenticity, as opposed to trying to modify it into something else from a different period, perhaps. And we really think that the, there is some elegance to this in terms of what it was originally and what it stood for. We will probably work with Jim Wilson on 30th Street, he's done many of our preservation work here. His office is literally up the street, so he's local and he understands the community, the cultures, and we're very excited about working with Jim on this project. But our inspiration really comes from some previous work that we've done, I just wanted to share with you very quickly. This is the Packard Building, it's the original Packard Automobile Dealership on Anaheim Boulevard in Anaheim, it's a 1923 building. And the photo to my left is what it was turned into, it was a transmission shop. And the photo on the right is the original Packard Building, where you can see a Packard Automobile there in the alley. And the building was substantially modified in the 80s, and when we purchased this asset from the city of Anaheim, and this is what it looks like today, we literally rebuilt all the little bells on top and the signage and rebuilt it back to the original. I'll go back one more time so you can see what it looked like there originally and where it is today, including the landscaping. These buildings have this wonderful opportunity to serve the community again in a sense. You know, we look at them as, you know, strong personalities, many of these buildings were here before we were here, and I think just with the right opportunity and attention, they really come back and really act as these wonderful places for our community. This is what's happened on the inside, we've added a restaurant and a brewery and a garden. Interesting on this building, when we were excavating, we found these license plates from the 20s that Packard Automobile had buried into the ground. I guess when our country went into depression, he hid all the license plates, so we turned those into lamps and fixtures, so we really had a lot of fun with this building. This is the Anaheim Packing House, this building is 1919, it sat empty for 30 years. It literally sat there for 30 years. There were some very minor uses here, there was a furniture warehouse, and then there was an ice-making facility here for some time. When we took on this project, the building was completely dilapidated. We've restored it, it now is on the National Registry, which we're really proud, so it's one of the jewels in America, and I think to all of our surprise, it's just been really amazing the way that the community here has embraced this project. If you haven't been, I'd love to invite you and share this with you, we think it really turned out really beautiful. There was about 32 vendors in here with artisan food that represent our local culinary culture. Jim Wilson was also the architect for Historical Art Tech on this project as well. We built a park adjacent to this, you can see on the upper, my left, that's the Packing House and Farmer's Park. One of the things we're really learning with these spaces is how much the outdoors is important. I think in this particular project, you know, the fact that it's near the beach and its topography is very important, because we can program all kinds of activities, as we do here in Anaheim. This is, you know, we have free yoga on Sundays, and we do night markets and all kinds of different activities. So the programming is very, very important for us and seems to really resonate well with the, with the community. This is a example of, we purchased, it's actually three city blocks of downtown retail from the city of Anaheim back in 2010. We restored it all to sort of this old downtown vintage American. One of the elements with our organization is called the LAB, stands for Little American Businesses. My wife Linda and I, she's in the audience. My wife, Linda, and I, she's in the audience, started the organization back in 1993. And the idea is to really work with the local operators. And I think that's really helped us over the years with just adding unique flavor. The formula was very apropos for us 23, 24 years ago, and I think it's even more appropriate today because many of our communities are really getting tired of national chains that really don't bring any personality. If anything, they take personality away from our communities. So programming and leasing with local operators that bring uniqueness is very important. And I think the Center Street revitalization has been really a great project for us. In many of these cases, we actually own and operate these businesses. I think this is an example. That's actually our own cheese shop that we operate. I don't know anything about cheese, but, but it is a great cheese shop. And then we also have the coffee shop that we operate. So in places where we can't find the tenants that we're looking for, we actually own and operate these businesses ourselves, and that's part of our model. This is just other examples of some of the businesses we've developed within that area. Vintage barber shop, Good Food Hall, which is another small food hall, and a haberdashery on my upper right slide. This is a project that we completed about two months ago. It's called Make. This was a 1917, very old and very dilapidated transmission shop, again, on Anaheim Boulevard and Santa Ana Boulevard. And we wanted to turn this project into a maker's quarter, where people that actually make products, light manufacturing in a sense. And this is what the building turned out today. We opened a couple of months ago. So this is Unsung Brewery, a winery, and we just got approved and signed the lease for a distillery. So we're very excited about this project. If you have a chance, please go and look at it. I don't think these slides do it justice, but it turned out really fantastic. But another example of where you can take really a dilapidated, I mean, this building really didn't have much of a romance or any sort of architectural integrity, in a sense, but it really has a lot of history. And I think for us, the history and the story behind these buildings have lots and lots of value. This is a project we did about seven years ago. This is the Casino San Clemente. It's the sister building to the building on Avalon. It's a 1937. It's, the building is an absolute jewel. It can, it sat there for many, many years, empty, and then it turned into an office building at some point. And so we completely restored it to its original use, and it serves as a pretty amazing community center. You can see we do weddings and the surf industry has events in here. We have jazz nights in here. You can see all the different programming that happens here. We have a full staff within our organization that does all the programming and the bookings and, and operation of all these projects. So we don't lease them out for, for, for this kind of activity. We operate it all in-house, which is very, very important, we've learned. It has another smaller venue within the venue for smaller groups. We also added Ellie's Table, which is a pretty fantastic breakfast place. And she, the community loves this place. If you haven't been, I'd love for you to, if you're ever in the area, I'd love for you to check it out. It's really beautiful. Cook's Chapel is a project that we completed about three years ago, and this is inside of the Packing House. It's about a 3,000 square foot venue. We're finding these new community center venue spaces. They're really multi-flex, in a sense, are very, very important. This is sort of a secret room. It has an exhibition kitchen in here where we, we also have jazz nights. Every other Thursday, we have jazz here, and the venue is really fantastic. These were some extremely talented local musicians that are looking for classy places to play. And we get a full house in here. We use the color in the kitchen for culinary school. This is the culinary lab. We actually teach people how to cook and bake, and we do food tasting, we do wine tasting. All kinds of interesting events happen in here. This is another project in Costa Mesa that's called Alleluia. Same type of thing. It's part gallery, it's part event space. Same thing what happens here, there is weddings and there is food exhibitions and so forth. So our programming here for Balboa is very much the same. We're very excited about restoring the building and bringing in some exciting uses for the local community. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, any more? Let me ask members of the council, any questions before we turn it to the public? All right. Thank you, Mr. Siddiqui. I'm sure we'll bring you back in a few moments to ask any more questions. Any members of the public, please come forward if you have comments on this matter.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Sean Fitzgerald. I'm here on behalf of the Discovery Science Foundation. I hope you'll forgive my somewhat casual attire. I had to run here from soccer practice, so just barely made it. We are the operators of what is now known as Discovery Cube's Ocean Quest. This is formerly known as Explore Ocean, right now in the heart of the, of the Balboa Village. So as we've made this transition to Discovery Cube's Ocean Quest over the last few months, we've invested well over $1 million, countless hours worth of staff time. So we're clearly very committed to seeing the village continue to thrive and grow. And so we wanted to sort of add our voices to this issue this evening. The partner that staff is recommending for this project is highly sought after, as you've seen, and the reasons are clear. Their projects are incredibly high quality, woven right out of the, the communities that they're going into, and yet very innovative and trendy at the same time. And then they've managed, of course, sustain themselves over time. So, and the concepts that we've seen for the Balboa Theater seem right along that tradition. So we're very supportive of this. We're going to add our voices to that, and thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Please come forward.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. I noticed that the proposed grant deed, which is on page 11-28 of your staff report, has two conditions on it. One is the condition that the purchaser of the property will maintain it as a cultural center. The other is a condition that the city retains the right of first refusal if it needs to repurchase the property. I'm curious if the city did exercise that second condition and choose to repurchase it. Is there any understanding of how much the city might be charged to buy the property back? And if so, where that understanding is recorded? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Ms. Brandt, do you want to respond to that question? Mr. Mosher?
The selling price would be negotiable.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's the issue we discussed earlier today. So we've added the term fair market value to that provision to make sure it's abundantly clear.
Okay. Any other comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll come forward. Mr. Solich.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of the team that interviewed Shaheen and his team on this project, and I'm really excited to have selected him and have, have this agreement in front of the city council. It may not be the highest amount of money that we can get for the property, but I look at this as being a real investment in Balboa Village to help achieve a lot of the revitalization goals we've been trying to do over the years, at least all the time I've been on the city council. And I've visited most of the venues that were shown in the slideshow, and I can tell you, they're first-class, they're innovative, and I think that we're lucky to have a firm like this coming in, investing in our community. And I'd like to move the approval of the agreement.
Mr. Petros.
I'll just briefly add to that. I'm very supportive of this as well. If you were to have taken the chance and walked around parts of Costa Mesa along Bristol near Randolph 20 years ago, you could have shot a cannon down it, you could have seen all sorts of trash, blight in that area. And now, as you go by there, it becomes a vibrant part and a very proud part of the Costa Mesa fabric called So, So Becca. It's now the home of the Lab, the camp. There is a whole host of retail. And what you see most of all are young people on the sidewalks, walking around, going from venue to venue. And it has spurred other growth along the streets around Randolph, on the frontage of Bristol, and as far back as Baker. If you were to have gone down Anaheim, Anaheim Avenue, Anaheim Boulevard, near Broadway in Anaheim 10 years ago, it was a dangerous area. It was not a place that you would have wanted to have walked about. Yet now, if you go out there on a weekend night, that farmer's market area is vibrant. There is a mix of young and old, of all diverse backgrounds that are now flocking to that center of area. We can only hope that this type of reinvestment in the village has that type of an effect. I would love to see people in droves like they are around the Packing House down on Balboa Boulevard again. I think this is not only a fair price for the, the property, given the deed restriction, but it has immense multiplier impacts to the city, will benefit the city immeasurably. So I, I'm very supportive of this, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Curry.
Well, I will just echo the comments of my colleagues. I've had an opportunity to visit most of this, most of this developer's projects around Southern California, and they are not only masterful, but they are authentic. They're woven into, as the community, they're part of the community. I've been at the Anaheim Packing House, where local restaurateurs from here, actually, were up there checking out the concepts for what was new and cutting-edge to bring back at other places. I only wish that this parcel was larger so that you'd have an opportunity to do more with it, but I think we're really in for a great contribution. This goes back to Mike Ince's time in trying to revitalize the peninsula. Mayor Dixon, your time now in picking up that cause, and I think it's going to be a great asset to our community.
Well, thank you. And let me just add my comments. And as Mr. Curry just said, this is, and as Mr. Solich said, as I have read over the years, the master plans for Balboa Village, and this revitalization of the Balboa Theater, as well as Ocean Quest, formerly known as Explore Ocean, have been identified as anchors to the revitalization of that important economic zone, if you will, on the peninsula. So this is a long time in coming. I am grateful to Mr. Siddiqui and his team of authentic, that's a wonderful word, architectural and, and cultural experts to invest in our community. When we joined, when I joined the city council a couple of years ago, and the current ongoing discussions about the nonprofit foundation status of the Balboa Theater, and had been many, many tireless hearts and treasures involved in the nonprofit foundation entity of the Balboa Village Theater, and it just couldn't quite get going. And I, as many people know, I'm a strong proponent and advocate for public-private partnerships, but this is the ultimate transferring from the public, the city owns this building, to a private investor and authentic builder of communities and vital, vitalizing neighborhood, surrounding community. And it just adds to the excitement that was already going on and the investment and revitalization of the entire peninsula. And I am grateful to my predecessor, Mr. Hen, and staff who have shepherded this, this concept and worked with, with applicants for the last several years, and it's just a great fruition. So I will say, let's call for the vote and see what happens.
The motion carries unanimously, 6-0.
Wow, that's fantastic. Thank you all. Next item is item number 12, the police headquarters and fire station number three roofing project. So, Mr. Piattar, did you have a comment to make about this before we go to staff?
No, I'll go ahead and wait for staff. Thanks.
All right. So Mr. Webb.
Actually, Mr. Fikovitch is here to do a staff report, and then I believe we're going to talk about maybe holding this item until the next meeting.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. Tonight's action is an award of a purchase and installation and construction contract for the replacement of the roof at the police department headquarters building and right adjacent fire station number three. Based on our experience, the last round of roofing projects that the city did, we chose to use a cooperative purchase agreement through the U.S. Communities Program for this construction project. Now, it includes a complicated system here, and I'll just show you a few pictures. I know we've received a few questions on it. Could you pull this up? Thank you. I'm going to go right back to the pictures. What we're dealing with is, you know, original roofing systems, they have been, you know, patched and, and portions of it replaced about 20 years ago. But we do have leaks, but they're complicated. You can see all the equipment that's up on these roofs with the air conditioning units, the, the screening systems, all the conduits that are in there. And it requires an extensive amount of labor. And the price is more than we would like to see, but the research that we've done is, is that this is within the competitive ballpark for prevailing wage, public works job for this type of roofing system. Now, there are two different types of roofing systems we're proposing. One is a, just a basic membrane system on the police station roof. And we've been asked, on the fire station roof, it includes a gravel layer system on top of the membrane. Different uses or different activities on the building. You can see with this, the pictures I'm showing you, these are the police station facilities on top of, on top of their roof. And they have quite a bit of activity going on up there, too, with all of their antennas and the air conditioning units. So you have more people going up and down, up and around that roof. But on the fire station, it's a little bit different. We could research it some more in terms of why the gravel was recommended by our staff and as they looked at it. But the gravel system in the fire station roof, it apparently, it provides an additional layer of protection when it comes to thermal expansion and, and basically longevity. It helps get the 30-year warranty there, too. So both of these would be 30-year warranty roofing systems. We'd be happy to look at, if there's some more questions, we can go back and look at it, continue this item, but that's what it is in a nutshell.
Okay, Mr. Curry, you want to speak? Oh. All right. Mr. Piattar, did you have any comments?
Yeah, I've been going back and forth with staff and really haven't gotten responses, and the responses I've gotten are, they're just the specifics that I need to get to the right staff guy on. Gravel is used very, very infrequently on any roof. Usually, it's expensive, it's ballast. If it's used anywhere, it's used in the Midwest. You know, to, to put the gravel roof on the fire station rather than a high-tech membrane roof does not make sense. The cost on both of these structures, like Mark said, is extraordinarily high. You're putting $18 a square foot on the police station roof, and you can see by the pictures, it is a complicated roof. And then 50% again, more for a cheaper roof for the fire station. Now there, they've got low spots they're trying to fix with crickets there. They've got hatches and skylights that they're also including. So if the council doesn't mind, I would love to take the next two weeks and work with staff and bring it back at the next meeting. So my move, my motion would be to continue it.
Okay, let's go out to the public. Any comments on this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, why don't we vote on Mr. Piattar's motion?
Motion to continue passes unanimously, 6-0.
All right. Madam Clerk.
Motion for reconsideration, a motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Mr. Curry, do you want to adjourn in the honor of one of our residents?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Former City Arts Commissioner Wendy Brooks passed away on September 24th at her Newport Beach home. Wendy was born and raised in Los Angeles and first got to know Newport Beach as a teenager during frequent visits here with the members of the Gronski family. Wendy graduated from LA's University High and went on to study English and theater arts at UCLA. She worked professionally and volunteered extensively in the Los Angeles area until she moved to Newport Beach in the 1990s. Dozens of Orange County organizations became the recipients of Wendy's time and talents, including the Orange County Museum of Art, Laguna... including the Orange County Museum of Art, Laguna Art Museum, the guilds of the Orange County Performing Arts Center, and South Coast Repertoire Theater. She served on the Newport Beach Arts Commission for two terms and was a member of the Newport Beach Arts Foundation Board, Newport Beach Centennial Legacy Project Committee, the Premier Cinema Guild, the Newport Beach Sister City Association, and the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee, along with many other local nonprofit organizations. Wendy literally was a member of and served on dozens of local nonprofits supporting the arts, historic preservation, the environment, and her community. Wendy is survived by her sons Darren and Brett Kaplan for grandchildren and her brother Bruce Stevens. Services have been held, and her family suggests donations may be made to the Newport Beach Arts Foundation. Wendy literally had arts lever as her license plate, and delighted in being an arts commissioner, was always at all the events, was a tremendously enthusiastic civic booster, and we will miss her.
We will, indeed. We are adjourned. Thank you.